I'm gonna guess you guys are working on it, but we cannot hear you in the conference.
Very good.
Got it?
I can hear you now.
I can hear you now.
Well, welcome, everybody, to our March 14 Planning Commission meeting for the great city of Lake Forest Park. Meredith, we were standing here, you weren't feeling well, but thanks for rallying for the meeting. And Melissa, great to see you, and Walter, you as well. In the room, let's see. So, hi, I was just checking the order of things. I wanted to say also, welcome to our newest official planning commissioner, Cherie Penazzo. Penazzo, did I say right? Penazzo, who was officially approved last Thursday at the council meeting. Cherie, would you like to take just a minute to introduce yourself and who you are and why you're here?
Sure, let's see, my husband and I have been here for 23 years, Lake Forest Park. And with the, I have a 19-year-old and a 24-year-old. And while they were in school, I was very involved with PTA and just community work and that type of stuff. So it was brought kind of to my attention that this position might be open. And I really enjoy being involved in planning, and so I think this is a good fit. I don't know what else to tell you. My oldest daughter lives in Mount Lake Terrace, and my youngest is going to Western.
Very good, we're very happy to have you, and we appreciate your interest in the work we have ahead. We told her that during her interviews, how much work there is ahead, and she stuck around. So I also want to acknowledge that we have someone else in the room who simply couldn't make the last city council meeting, so was not able to be officially approved, but he'll be joining us. His name is Sam Kastig, and he is, I think, off-screen, can you scoot a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
This way, just to say hi to our friends. And we'll have an official introduction of Sam at our next meeting. So just wanted to let you know those things were in the works, so that gives us a full body again. Okay, um, let's see, do you, you have this, do you want to start us off, Cherie, with the land acknowledgement?
We'd like to acknowledge that we are the traditional land of which the first group of native people who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native people who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate the longer history of this land we call home, our relationship to this history and the heritage of those people whose ancestor lived here before the European-American immigration that began in the 1800s.
Thank you very much. I'm always reminded when that's read that we are in, by extension, also stewards of this land and have a heavy responsibility to fulfill, and I appreciate the time you all put in to do that. Could I get somebody to bring our agenda to the floor?
Motion to bring the agenda to the floor.
Excellent, can I get a second, please?
All second.
Thank you, I wasn't sure if you guys could hear online, I'll try to talk louder. Right, is, are there any additions or edits to the agenda? Any discussion? Okay, seeing that all those in favor of the agenda as published, they say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I think we're not gonna let our guests wait any longer. Most of you will recall that we had a group of active neighbors who were exploring land trusts as maybe a route for affordable housing in our community, and they had some homework to do, which they've done, and they have prepared what I think looks to be a very informative presentation. And so with no further ado, and I'm sorry, I should have mentioned you for the meeting to introduce you directly, but should I introduce you, Michael?
Yes.
Do you remember Michael? And are you leaving the presentation right now?
I'm just introducing that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. With that, let me turn it over to you.
Very good, thank you, so thank you for your Can you hear, can you hear me? Two notes.
They can't hear you?
Yes, so I'll speak loud. So thank you for your patience since we appear in fall appearing today. The need for middle housing, actually any type of housing, to be honest, is so great. We're grateful that we have this opportunity to present to the planning commission. Lake Forest Park, having a history of trying to be something different, not a gated community like the Highlands when it started, with an environmental focus is what brings us here today. We find it important to address the fact that our children, seniors, and the diversity of people that we need to live within our city can't find affordable housing to do that. So to address this, we want you to learn more about this model, Community Land Trust, because it is a solution for the missing middle. We have great growing interest in the North King County area as other cities are asking our executive director to provide a solution in their areas. So I think there's a lot of synergy that can come from this. So I will now leave it to Kathleen, also the executive director of the State Community Land Trust, 30 years of history of this in our area, to explain the business model. And we really look forward to questions about this, especially from our staff, because this only makes sense, makes sense to you. And we love to hear what you think about our presentation, what else you might need to do to make this a better community.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, and thank you all, those Zoom land and in the room for this opportunity. Will we advance the slides by me just saying, next slide?
That's okay.
Okay, that'd be terrific, well, I'm really honored to be here and hope to take you on a bit of a journey through the model, our origins, what we use the Community Land Trust for in the region, and then talk a little bit about how affordable homeownership at the end is what cities can do to support bringing more affordable homeownership to your communities, whether through Community Land Trust model or other, through other means. But so let's, let's go to the first slide, which is a definition of Should I go up and tap the screen there? Nope. All right, while you're figuring that out, I'll just plow ahead with talking about, we have a definition of Northwest, from the Northwest Community Land Trust Coalition, of a Community Land Trust. A Community Land Trust are actually a model that's defined in federal statute, they're in a a Community Housing Development Organization statute called the Salas-Graston Act. And so the, thank you, the Northwest Community Land Trust Coalition definition mirrors what's in the federal statute, but this is what's been adopted for the five-state region that the coalition represents. And it's a, Community Land Trust is a private, nonprofit, community governed, and/or membership corporation that, whose mission is to acquire, hold, develop, lease, and steward land for making homes, farmland, gardens, businesses, and other community assets permanently affordable for current and future generations. And as CLT's bylaws prescribe, that the governing board is comprised of individuals who live in the CLT service area, one-third of whom are currently or potentially could be leasing members in, in the Community Land Trust program. And that last part is what distinguishes a Community Land Trust, the membership aspect, and the governance of people served on the board are, is one of the things that distinguishes Community Land Trust from other forms of affordable homeownership delivery, if you will. Next slide, please. The distinctive features of a Community Land Trust are that accountability and local control, because it's the people who live on the land in the Community Land Trust that are serving and governance. There's a lot of centering the voice of the people served in, in the program, in the governance of the organization. Another distinctive feature is that it's one-time investments in homes that are stewarded over multiple generations of owners that create the permanent affordability. So we like to call it a one-and-done model for public investment in, in creating the homes. There's the equitable governance, as we just talked about, having the people who live on the land in the governance structure. And a really important aspect for this model, we are talking a lot about displacement of lower-income people, and Community Land Trust homeownership always cement in a community housing that is affordable for the first buyers, but also for generations of buyers thereafter in that income category. So, next slide, please. The Community Land Trust model, I'm, I'm really honored to get to talk about the roots of it. It is a social innovation that comes down to us from the 1960s in the deep south, Albany, Georgia, where civil rights era leaders were working with people in communities there, the Student Unviolent Coordinating Committee was enrolling people of color to vote in the 1960s, it's part of the civil rights movement. And what happened was that when black people registered to vote, white landowners who were leasing the land to these folks for farming and for living retaliated by throwing them off the land, so just for registering to vote. So this was a triggering event, there had been a variety of research efforts around collective ownership of land and housing leading up to this point. And this was the event that led civil rights era leaders like Charles and Shirley Sherrod, and the late Representative John Lewis, and members of the Martin Luther King's family to come together and create the very first Community Land Trust, which was new communities. It was something like 6,000 acres, was the largest tract of land held by people of color in the history of the United States at the time. And they created the model that we use today to create homeownership opportunities. Next slide. And this is what we use the model for. And even in spite of the fact that we're having this market correction, where you're seeing home prices drop to a certain extent because of what's going on in our economy, these are prices that, for homes that are still, are two-years-old, and these still reflect our current market conditions. And what you see here is that in 2014, the median price of a home, that blue line, that median price was 462,000, and then within seven years, that price had, had blued up to almost $800,000. The red line or orange line, depending on how it shows up on your screen, that's the, that's the price that a median household could afford. And you could already see that in 2014, there's a gap, so that even the homes that were available, the median-priced homes, were unaffordable to the typical household. That only got worse over the following seven years, to, to where the median household was having to stretch far beyond its means to buy a home. And then that gray line at the bottom, that is the price that would be affordable to someone in our program who makes 80% or less of area median income. And who is it that we're talking about when we, we talk about that type of income? We're talking about teachers, first responders, the people who restore power when there's a storm, you know, nonprofit employees, you know, just, almost 60% of the population has income below 80% of area median income. So it's a very large element of our, of our population in King County. Next slide, please. So what we do is we build homes and price them far below market prices, because that is what people could truly afford. So the typical homes in our program, taking into account the incomes here in King County, range between 240,000 and 330,000. And those are typically townhomes, but we're also developing condominium homes at the lower end of that range. Next slide, please. So I wanted to bring up these two different ways that people historically put homeownership within each lower-income household. One is down payment assistance, that's the more common term. So a lot of times when planners are talking about affordable housing, they talk about down payment assistance, generically as if that is the, the only tool that we have. The down payment assistance is typically a loan to the buyer of the home, and it is typically repaid when the person sells that home, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road. So it's, it's can be deferred, no payments during the duration of the tenancy in the home, but it is paid, repaid with interest. Typically, it loses purchasing power, that money loses purchasing power as, as inflation occurs and home prices increase. So when someone pays that loan back, the value of when they're paying back, even when the interest has, has lost its ability to create another affordable housing, more money usually has to be added to that then to help the next person buy a home through down payment assistance. And we have, we still use this as a tool, it's still valuable, but it is often needed to be combined with what we call permanent affordability. And that's, permanent affordability is the model that we're talking about, the Community Land Trust homeownership. It takes a one-time public investment, potentially from multiple sources, but it, it's a loan or grant to the housing developer, not the buyer. And it subsidizes the price of the home down to that affordable level, that 240 to 330 level, and it stays with the, in our case, the land trust, so that it secures that affordable price going forward. It's not repaid when the home is sold. And what happens is the opportunity to purchase rolls forward, keeping the home affordable to the next income-qualified buyer. Explain that a little bit better in a minute. But next slide will show why down payment assistance isn't a good tool for our current market. There was a time when down payment assistance was very effective, and that was in the mid to late 90s, when incomes and home prices were a lot closer to each other. You, they were, it was a difference of sometimes $25,000 or $75,000 was what needed, you needed to get somebody into a home. But you can see that about the time we started to have the run-up to the housing bubble, that, you see the blue light peak there, the difference between what a median household could afford and what home prices were got very large. It got to be like $150,000. The difference for the affordable folks, though, is multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. So you start to see that for a while there, early on, down payment assistance was enough, and Community Land Trust could use that as a tool. But now, so then we had our housing bubble and our recession, and for a brief period of time, the median household could buy the median-priced home, but not for very long. And then you see this rapid acceleration of the median price of a home taking off, far outstripping even what median households could really, truly afford, and, and just far outpacing what lower-income households could afford. So when that happens, you don't create first-time home buying opportunities for lower-income down payers. You have to build new construction homes and subsidize the prices so that they're affordable, and, and to keep those prices for the future. So next slide, please. So what Homestead does, or what any Community Land Trust does, is we build new construction, or we rehab existing homes, if we can access them at the appropriate price. We go out and fundraise through public sources primarily, but some philanthropic sources, to reduce the price at the first sale to what is affordable to people that we serve. At the first sale, then the title of the land is separated from the title of the sticks and bricks or the improvements, the home itself. The land is retained by Homestead, and then the home is financed through regular 30-year fixed-rate mortgage through a third-party bank, and, and that's what the homebuyer owns. They then lease the land from the Community Land Trust for a small monthly fee, and that agreement is tied up in their ground lease. And in the ground lease is also a formula that they agree to control their equity gain on the home. So they agree to a formula price that allows them to build wealth while they own the home. Wouldn't be worth doing homeownership if they weren't building wealth, might as well just rent if we're not building wealth. They do build wealth while they own the home, but not so much that they can't pass on an affordable price to the next income-qualified family that buys into the program. So through this, affordability is perpetuated. I'm, I'm gonna say this, all that again in a different way with the next slide. So said differently, in Community Land Trust homeownership, we subsidize that initial price of the home at the first sale, and we control the future costs increases of the home through agreements with buyers. And we use typically ground leases when there's actual dirt under the home, but if we're in a condominium where the dirt is shared, as it were, we use a covenant or a deed restriction instead of a ground lease, there's no ground to, to lease in that setting. There is, but it's not to the individual homeowner. So then buyers purchase the structure of the home, but not the land. And removing the land value from the transaction is part of what creates the affordability, but it's not the whole story. We are typically also subsidizing a portion of the construction of the home itself, the, the improvements on the land as well. As I said previously, the, the land is, is retained within the Community Land Trust and owned collectively, and stewarded collectively by the members who are primarily our homeowners. We do have a category of community membership, so invite all to become community members of Homestead and help us steward these assets themselves for current, future generations. The ground lease or the covenant is a 99-year renewable agreement. So if one of our homeowners lives in the home for 99 years and continues to be alive at that point, we will renew that ground lease, and, you know, God bless them for, for their longevity. But that's, that's the legal way of saying, you have rights, you have exclusive rights to the land underneath your home forever. And then that resale formula that's in the ground lease spelled out the, the price at which the homeowner sells the next low-income or income-qualified buyer. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the lease, does that remain the same place in about 99 years, the land?
The land lease, yeah, there's, yeah, we do reserve the right to increase it slightly every five years, but it's, it's a tiny amount that's controlled by an index that's spelled out in the ground lease. So for example, when I first got to Homestead, the ground leases were $35, and that, that five years, they went up to like $37. So it's, you know, there's no big surprises about, we're gonna double your land lease at some point, yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
If someone passes rather than moves out, does, does the, do the heirs inherit?
Yes, they do. In fact, we have a story right now of a mom whose daughter was living with her, and she recently passed right before Christmas, and her daughter's inherited the home, and she's going to continue to live there, she chooses to continue to live there. Some heirs don't want to live in the home, but they inherit it, and they get to sell it as part of the estate that they would like.
Okay, thank you.
So who qualifies? We, these programs, mainly because the funding is set up with this way, they focus on first-time homebuyers, people who have never owned a home, or funders will reset the clock three years after you owned a home, and it's that you never bought a home. There's also some special circumstances, displaced homemakers or single parents in a divorce can also qualify as first-time homebuyers, as can people who are fleeing domestic violence situation, so those can be allowed. The, their income needs to be lower than 80% of area median income. Generally speaking, we, we try to encourage people who make more than $50,000 a year, you can be kind of too low income to purchase a home. We want people to be able to maintain the home in good repair and that, so having a certain income threshold. It's all, all dependent on the particular home that they're buying, however. We have some homes that are really very low cost because they came into our trust at a very low cost, and then their price was controlled, and some of those are accessible to people with lower incomes. But so generally speaking, we, we encourage people to have at least $50,000 of income. They have to be able to qualify for conventional 30-year fixed-rate mortgage from a local participating bank, but that can also be, should we have compliant lending? It can also be ITIN mortgages, and ITIN mortgages are for folks who don't have a social security number. They need to be able to contribute 1% to the down payment. So when they go, so we've solved two big problems, three big problems. One is the fly homes, the other is the, the mortgage based on what's affordable for the income. And the third problem we've solved is that down payment. Most banks will require 10 or 20% down within our programs. These banks agree, you only have to bring 1%. And that's because the, the loan-to-value ratios are a little different in Community Land Trust homeownership, and it works out for the bank, probably a two technical competition to get into tonight, but happy to follow up with anybody that had a question about that. But happy to follow up with anybody that have a question about that. Um, and uh that minimum income qualifications depending on the home uh that's being purchased. Next slide. So this is a table that shows what that upper limit of eighty percent of very median income is. As defined by HUD right now in King County. This has always changed in April, so you can expect to see different numbers, you know, next month. Um, but for one person household, it's about sixty six thousand, sixty seven thousand. Uh, for a two person household, it's about seventy six thousand. And uh three person, eighty five thousand. Four person, ninety five thousand, five person, hundred and two thousand, and so on. It's always adjusted by household size. That just gives you a sense. And we try to price our homes not right up at eighty percent. But actually down between sixty five, seventy percent A M Y. So that there are people with incomes above that price point and people below that price point. Um, who can afford and and qualify for those homes. It's really hard to find people who are just right at eighty percent, you know, that's a needle in a haystack. So, uh, next slide, please. So how do our homeowners build wealth? Um, when you talk about um a a formula resale price of one point five percent compounded annually, that doesn't sound like very much. But over time, um, that plus their pay down principal actually turns into a nice little nest egg. Uh, for uh most of the folks that um are in our program for uh five to ten years, they can. Uh, that current um resales that actually are priced uh lower priced homes. Um, they can be taking home, you know, a hundred thousand dollars of wealth. Um, that's not what we would expect selling a market rate home. And that's uh, that's okay, because the folks that are in our program wouldn't have the opportunity to buy a market rate home. They would be renting and renting builds no wealth. Uh, and the other challenge for most of our folks that were renting these days is that rent prices. Are uh they're cost burdened by their rent, so they're not able to save either. Uh, the the beauty of this um program is that they have an affordable, fixed affordable housing payment that they can plan around. And that we know that they can afford within their income. That gives them the leeway to budget and plan for their future and um and save wealth. Next slide, please. So many people think that uh community land trust homes are just single family detached, that, you know, white picket fence type of experience. Um, but actually, all housing types can work within a community land trust. We do have um just under half of the homes in our program are scattered site, single family homes, detached homes. Um, all of our new construction that we're building is a multi family, if you will. We completed our our rented Willowcrest townhomes uh in twenty twenty one. Uh, those are net zero energy townhomes with some excess rainstorm water. So we, one of the things about Homestead in particular is we're really always trying to exceed code and exceed standards for environmental responsibility with our homes. Um, because we think climate equity and climate resilience is another gift that we need to give to lower income uh folks. Uh, who are often shut out of those opportunities. You know, it's most of the folks uh who have means that can put solar panels on their roofs. We want um the people who live in our homes to have those opportunities too. In twenty twenty two, we finished our Village Gardens townhomes that are in the central district. This is a lovely partnership um where we we work with the African Town Community Land Trust on outreach to people who have been displaced from central district, um historically black community. Um, and we, through the city of Seattle's community preference policy, we gave preference to people who had been displaced or were at risk of displacement from the central district. Um, we are currently under construction in Tuaquilla. And I I brought a a site plan of our Tuaquilla project called the Southern. To talk about that is our second net zero for energy uh development. Village Gardens has solar panels on the roof, but it's not net zero energy. Um, we, the Southern is the net zero energy. This this time, instead of townhomes, it's cottage homes duplexes. Um, so a different feel, it's uh community oriented design with a central courtyard and green space and some uh a community garden and a little grove that's a orchard and some uh cool stuff there. We also uh are planning a couple of condominiums in uh the city of Seattle. Both of them paradoxically on Finney Avenue um in the Finney neighborhood. Uh, two really different types of buildings. One will have some um co-housing like features in it. And another will just be a traditional condominium structure. Uh, so let's go to the next slide, I'll tell you a little bit more about the Southern, uh which is our um project in Tuaquilla. Uh, this is a a lovely development that was uh named for Patty Southern, who was rebuilding activist that worked for King County. Um, she unfortunately passed away, uh but prior to her uh passing, she was a big advocate for this project. This is um will be eleven uh affordable homes and uh five market rate homes. Uh, and then two group homes for adults with disabilities that we are developing with our fee services. Uh, net zero for energy, if you go to the next slide, um, well, you'll see a little slight map of. So you can see the homes kind of in an L shape. Um, uh, well, um, most of the homes kind of face that simple order, that green space. Um, and then all the parking is um uh to the. Um, and there will be E V charging stations for uh vehicles. You can see the trees, they're almost in the middle of the slide. There's um eight trees on one side and then four on the other. That's our our grove. Um, we try to really reflect local priorities um in the design of our homes. And we knew that food production um was a really important element in Tuaquilla. The uh Riverton Park, Connecticut, and that is church, which is right next door to this project, uh is the home for the Tuaquilla food pantry. So it's the food bank. Um, so uh food uh security is a big aspect of this neighborhood's um values. So we've got the food um uh edible landscaping, including the groves. And then we'll have um a community garden at one end of that.
So the market rate um homes still lease their land?
They don't, they get ownership of their parcel.
Yeah.
So that that means that they're on individual basic laws, right?
Yep.
Is that the case for all of the individual units?
They they do in this uh configure, yeah, it's a a subdivision. So they do have their discrete legal definitions of their land that they are, yeah.
And you said that there were five of them?
Yes. Uh, so next slide, please. Uh, so in uh, there's a lot of opportunity for resident control and resident input in our model. Uh, as I mentioned, it's our homeowners that are the largest category of membership. And then there's a a category for community members who may want to join. Um, and and who will agree to support our our purposes as defined in our articles of the corporation. It is our members that elect the members of our board and elect the officers of our board. And only members can make certain decisions about um the community land trust governance as defined by the bylaws. Including only the members can change the resale formula. Um, only members can sell land, uh can approve of the sale of land out of the trust. Uh, and so the board um supervises me and I supervise the staff. And but that's how members are, uh their voices are centered in governance. They also have hyper local control through the homeowners associations that we um establish uh for the multi family developments. Uh, let's see, next slide. So one of the things that's also really important about preserving affordability and about the community land trust model is what we call stewardship. And stewardship means that Homestead stays around and stays in relationship with all of our buyers throughout the time that they own the home. Um, obviously, they're paying a ground lease or program fee to us monthly. Um, and then we are there to help them find resources to maintain their home. Um, if they experience financial distress, we are there to help them get connected with resources to uh help them uh prevent foreclosure. Um, and um, uh, and then when they do go to sell their home, we help them price the home and find the next uh affordable uh income qualified buyer to purchase the home. We, because we actively steward our our uh homeowners, we've only had uh we've had less than one percent foreclosure rate, which compares very favorably both to the market as well as to other homeownership programs. Uh, next slide, please. So we have at present two hundred and forty five homes in trust. And through resale, that's created three hundred first time home buying opportunities for uh income fall by buyers. And uh, we don't give preference on the basis of race, but by lowering barriers to people who have been historically shut out of ownership by discrimination, redlining, um and restricted covenants. We uh 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 achieved a fifty eight percent uh BIPOC ownership rate, uh which is important. Um, we've been around for thirty years. We just uh just completed our thirtieth anniversary uh in January and hope to be around for um forever. That's the community land trust motto. Um, the next couple of slides are really uh about some suggestions that we have for how you can support um can uh affordable homeownership in your communities. But I'll stop for a minute before we launch into that and just see if you have any other questions about the model.
I'm I'm just curious, you know, what you run into in terms of hurdles for local governments? Because it seems like the only time that our zoning regulations would be a problem be if you wanted to develop a single family land and as a kind of a, you know, one person to do with that. Multiple single family residents on that much. But if you're working in any of our mixed use areas or family areas, that that would all be difficult. We only didn't get involved in condominiums, so so just, you know, you've got some things there. There's a list, I don't want to jump into that too much, but you know, just in general, what are the kind of common things you went into jurisdictions?
As barriers?
Yeah.
Well, so we like to respect each jurisdiction's um ability to determine what's right for the local community. And so we adapt. Um, you know, the zoning in Tuaquilla is really different than the zoning in Seattle. And 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 it's different from the zoning in Brenton. And um we just try to work within the parameters of what what folks are comfortable with. In Tuaquilla, um, we have actually a special development agreement that's a pilot for them. Where uh they allowed us to build more densely than they would otherwise as a demonstration project of what what would it look like? And they're not ready to like let everybody, you know, uh do more dense development uh as we are. Uh, but they wanted to test uh what that, how that might look. And when we first started out, frankly, um, all the homes, they were saying that all the homes needed to be detached from each other. Um, but then we went back to them um after we had pretty much everything planned. And we said, you know, it really doesn't make sense to have, you know, this much room between each of the homes. What if, what if we just did them as duplexes? You know, that would save a little bit of money on our construction costs and it would put bigger spaces between the homes. Um, that didn't have a shared wall. And they said, yeah, that makes sense. We could, you know, so we we just like to work with those local jurisdictions, work within what they are doing. That said, you know, um, increased density is a good thing for housing. Um, but we were just having a conversation before the meeting started about the importance of factoring in livability as well. And and environmental stewardship uh when we're designing. We we want green spaces, you know, we want uh the homes not just to be, you know, um sardine cans to pack people into. Uh, we do want to honor the land. Uh, we want to honor the spirit of the land. And we want to uh find that right relationship and that right balance between homes and people and um and the and the um uh the green environment.
I have a question about how sale works, you went over it a little bit. Um, could you talk maybe a little bit in more detail about how that? As I understand it, the 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 members of the the project determine when a lot gets sold, is that how I heard that or?
Uh, no, we, um, so when somebody applies to our program, the how the sale works is that they they uh take an eligibility uh assessment, so that we know that they're income qualified. Uh, then they go on a a waiting list and we update them anytime a home is available. So sometimes if we're just finishing a project, you know, we'll have twelve homes at once and let folks know about that. But more often, we have resales um that come up of people who bought homes previously and um uh want to uh buy a previously owned home. And in that case, we send out a notice to the whole waiting list and say, hey, we got this home available. Is this the kind of home that you want? Is it in the neighborhood you want to have the right number of bedrooms, et cetera? If it is, they then um express interest um through our our homeownership department. They give us more information about whether they can qualify to purchase the home. Um, then buyers get to tour, then they go get their um their free qualification from a bank to show that, yeah, I I can buy this. That thereafter, we have a tie breaking system um that helps us. We have upwards of like thirty or forty households that want to buy each of our homes. There's a ton of competition for these homes, so we have to have a way to to pick the ultimate buyer. Um, so we have some fair housing tie breaking. But we we're the ones that that do the um selecting of the buyers in uh for both new construction and resale.
So when you said you made the staff that did Homestead, yeah. Melissa, Amber. Melissa, you have a question?
I do, um, I had a question about, so some of the homes you're you're finding already purchase, that you're you're purchasing homes and then refurbishing them. Is that what I saw on one of the slides?
We we used to do that a lot um uh back uh right after the foreclosure prices. There were a lot of homes that were available and we were able to pick those up at um good prices. And we would invest in bringing them up to a standard and then reselling them. We don't have access to that as much anymore. Um, you know, the syndicators have gone through big markets like Seattle and and scooped up all the lower price starter homes. Uh, like Blackstone, yeah. Um, uh, and but they still happen. Uh, for example, we inherited a home, uh some uh housing activists um left us her home in in her will. And so we're doing a rehab on that and we'll sell that later this year. So it can happen if we get the homes at the right price point.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is, you you said that there's only a certain percentage that they can gain in terms of their equity. Um, is what if they make improvements to the home? Are they able to get their return on investment on that or is it just that one point five percent?
Yeah, community land trust uh programs have what we call capital improvement policies. And so um buyers, um homeowners, um let us know that they're gonna make a major investment in the home or they're gonna make a major repair, like put on a new roof. And they can get credit um to get compensated for that um investment at whenever they sell. Um, some of those investments are subject to a depreciation schedule, just like it would be for anybody that, uh, you know, you put a new roof on, ten years later, it's not new anymore. Uh, but so, yeah, we have capital improvement policies that do help them recapture the value of the investments that they make.
Uh, let's see, I can't see everyone online, is it, can we?
I had a follow up to Melissa's question, actually. So is that scheduled appreciation always one and a half percent or is it somehow pegged to C P I? With like maybe a minimum?
The depreciation schedule on capital improvements is um is spelled out in a policy that says, well, this is gonna depreciate uh over twenty years, this is gonna depreciate over ten years. And so it's not, it's not the one point five percent appreciation. And so it's not, it's not the 1.5% appreciation formula that's in the grounds. That is how they deal with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sorry, but my, my question was on the appreciation that's built in, I guess, at the initial purchase. Is that a flat one and a half percent or is it pegged to CPI?
It's one and a half percent in our program. We, when we started out our program, we had two different, we had a different way of doing it, which was appraisal based. And that's a lot more complicated. And so we've, over time, we learned that the 1.5% compounded annually is easier to understand and actually gets a better return for folks than the appraisal based. So we're all about maximizing the amount of equity that somebody can get from the sale of their home. So we are, you know, favoring the, the model that gets the most without letting it become unaffordable.
And then if I have a chance, I do have another one related. Do you have, I guess, is there a method that's employed to kind of encourage people to kind of graduate out of the program? If their income kind of raises above the AMI?
We, we let that take care of itself. You know, people move in and out of our homes for the same reason they move in and out of regular market rate homes. You know, they either get married or get divorced or they have kids or their kids go off to college or they get a job in a different area. And we find that people on average sell their homes every seven to 10 years. So, but, but we, we don't check their income afterwards. We had, our very first homeowner who bought the first community land trust home stayed in her home for 20 years. We just only finally resold that home last year. So that's, but she did, you know, ultimately resell because her life circumstance changed and she, she moved on. So, so we, we think that's a problem that takes care of itself.
That, that is kind of where I was going to, so you don't force anybody out because they're making more money now.
Yeah. I mean, because ultimately people are going to age to a place where they're going to be on a fixed income anyway. And, you know, so maybe their incomes do increase over time when their senior citizens move in. You know, if they haven't paid off their mortgage yet, we'd love for them to have an affordable housing payment still.
I want to computer chess to move on to this, but I think in the spirit of the questioning we're doing right now, are these units rentable or do they have? Do they have any, are, are they all covered by some sort of HOA, you know, small house company cares for their real property?
We traditionally, so most of our funders say the homes must be owner occupied for the majority of the year, although they will allow like a bedroom to be used as an air B and B. The owner has to be living there. They cannot be absent. And it's not in the spirit of the program to have somebody owning the home as an investment property.
That's what I wondered if you, you know, moved up in your income and said, I'm going to move, but I want to keep that as well as that.
We discourage that. If we find out that somebody's doing that, we ask them to sell. And it's a requirement of our funders say, if, if we don't enforce that in our agreements, we can be forced to pay back the subsidy that, that folks have invested to make that affordable home available. Sure. Or were there any other questions? You have a question?
Is it okay if I ask a question? Just a clarification, when we were talking about the less than 1% that could due to the structure of the ownership, do those then stay permanently affordable? Like the bank can't sell them a market rate?
They can. So the, the sad fact is that when, when a home has lost its foreclosure in our program, we have to go buy it back off the auction steps. Now, we could go there and like wear big signs that say, we own the land under this home. You don't really want to buy this home. But I've been yelled at by the auctioneers of like that's against the law and interfering with commerce. So you have to be, you know, you have to put on your armor of righteousness to go in there and get the home back.
Actually, you have to divulge that fact.
They, you think. But they don't. They don't. Serious law. Yeah, no, it's, it's a thing. Melissa has a question. Yeah.
Well, I guess it has to do with that land lease. And so if, if a home winds up going into foreclosure and then gets purchased by a buyer outside of the program, when the lease is up, can you take back the land?
Um, they, uh, how it's worked in the past, we've had this happen one time where we lost a hundred foreclosure and we had to go buy it back off the auction steps and, or off the courthouse steps during the auction. And, and investor buyer ignored us, went through and bought it and then discovered, holy cow, somebody else owns the land under this home. Um, and, um, and then had to negotiate with us about how we would buy it back from them. And that was kind of an expensive deal for us because it was, they, they were one of these folks that, that flipped homes and they had a really aggressive realtor that was sort of not very pleasant. And, and so they, you know, they held out for top dollar, but we did get the home back. And, you know, that was worth it to our program.
Kids try to help people not ever get into that.
Yeah, we have a lot of incentive to prevent that happening.
You should write something so that if that happens, the lease fees go up.
Well, that's what we can. We can charge a market rate for the lease. And usually that by itself is kind of, you know, a deterrent to them selling the home to anybody else. They might, their housing cost, their, their monthly payment is going to be ridiculous because we're going to charge a $400,000, $400 lease per month or something like that.
Did you say how many total units you guys had on?
Two forty-five.
How long is this municipal interest going to take?
Thirty years. Okay. All right. So here's some things, this is just generically for affordable homeownership, things that you can do. Um, first of all, just acknowledging that homeownership is affordable housing. We have shelter, we have affordable rental and homeownership should be considered part of the housing continuum. That access to homeownership is a racial equity issue. And many jurisdictions are starting to notice that because they're being required to look at this for compliance and such for the state are noticing the disparate impacts on, on folks of color in their local jurisdictions. And for many people, it's, it's, it's that people are just never allowed to buy into this area. So there's this history of not having people of color in the community. So having access to homeownership is an opportunity to invite people in. A public subsidy, so protect the state housing trust fund and advocate for homeownership county funding source. Currently, the King County doesn't have a sustainable source of homeownership funding. There's talk of them making changes to their transit oriented development funding that would make it work better for homeownership, but there's very limited dollars available for homeownership. And if you're outside of the city of Seattle, the city of Seattle has this wonderful housing levy that makes a lot of things possible. But if you're outside of the housing levy and if you're not an arch beneficiary, then there aren't resources for you to bring homeownership easily to your, your community. So then the next thing is a city funding mechanism. And what you're looking for is a funding mechanism that is allowable for uses of 60% AMI and above. Most of the tools that cities have that are state enabled are for 60 and below. That doesn't work for homeownership. That was intentional. The intent of the legislators in that regard was to create funding for homelessness and rental housing. So if you want homeownership, you may want to look for, like having a density bonus program with a fee and lieu alternative that developers can either create affordable units as part of market rate developments. Or if they don't want to do that, you can still give them the density bonus, but they will pay you a fee and lieu. And that, those fees and lieu can go into a pool that would then help establish affordable homeownership developments in your area. Surplus land, I, I think my colleagues here that are, we're trying to find ways to create homeownership in, in Lake Forest Park. We've been trying to locate some surplus properties that could be used for affordable homeownership. Homestead has, our village gardens project was a city Seattle surplus. One of our condominium projects is another surplus site. So these are really great resources. So far, we haven't been able to identify any surplus property that the city here owns. But perhaps you all know things that we don't know. Advocacy with the state county on behalf of specific projects. Let's say we got a project started. One of the things that happens is the state will come to the jurisdiction and say, is this project important to you? And you want somebody to answer the phone and say, yes, we want affordable homeownership here. That project is really important to us. If there's nobody available to answer that call and answer the state's questions, it might not get funded. So in a difficult environment. Um, obviously zoning incentives, you know, we, as I say, we do respect local jurisdictions to create amenities with the character that they want, but we do encourage you to permit townhomes duplexes and triplexes. King County offers property tax exemptions, not, uh, not full waiver of property tax, but modified property taxes so that they are based off a leasehold value of the home instead of the market rate of the home. Obviously, reduced or waived permit fees are a great thing for affordable housing, a reduced or waived DPA fees are great. And then next slide. Streamline subdivision process. One of the big things that we find is that having no requirement for advanced infrastructure provision. You would be shocked, maybe would be shocked at how often an affordable housing project is told, guess what, you need to put in a water main or some type of utility resource, not because your project needs it, but because future development needs it. That is fun, that is using affordable housing funding to essentially pay for for-profit development that comes down the road. So having, having the infrastructure investments associated with the affordable housing specific to the impact of that project is what's fair, having it paid for future development will, is a deterrent to getting more affordable housing in your community. No, no requirement for off-site infrastructure upgrades. Again, this is similar point. A streamlined permitting process, one of our projects that was a multiple homes on a property. The jurisdiction decided to permit each individual home, even though the plans were exactly the same. That, you know, made some money for the permit reviewers, but was it a cost in the city that they, they really didn't need? So streamlining the permitting process, it would be nice to have somebody that could not interfere to be an all flood person with, you know, the, the fire and the street, you know, Department of Transportation and the electrical and, and to help get everybody talking to each other so that they're not getting conflicting advice during the permitting process. Permitting the whole subdivision, not individual homes, I just mentioned, and then, and then the flood flood person. Um, inclusionary density bonus programs, so a few years back, Seattle kind of did this, you know, housing affordability and livability agenda and they, out of which came the mandatory housing affordability MHA guidelines that required people to either want a density bonus to perform onsite with affordable housing, either rent for homeownership or pay fees and lieu. A density program, a density bonus program is more voluntary. And the Homestead and the Northwest Community Land Trust Coalition did a webinar with the Association of Washington City on density bonus agreements. If that's of interest, I can follow up and give you a link to the recorded webinar so you can learn more about those. But they're just a way to have for-profit development, create affordable units that can then be stewarded by a community land trust going forward. And then corporate partnerships, advocating with the large employers that are in your community to support homeownership projects, either with charts of land that they might have available that they contribute for, for actual corporate dollars. And, yeah, direct investments in the, in the project and the geographic support. And then finally, the last thing that's there is, is advocate condominium law reform. The changes made in the condominium statutes have been beneficial and going in the right direction. There's still a few more things that can be done, like allowing folks to, the right to, developers to cure defects rather than pay out some, so if there's a problem with something that we build, having the opportunity to replace and repair rather than pay a settlement, which is really probably just going to go to pay employer's fees to the lawsuit. So there's more to be done there, but watch for bills going through the legislature over time to, to create more opportunity for that. That was a lot. Questions about all that? Oh, yes. Thank you. About this time last year, we released this report and the closed doors report is online. This is an interactive Tableau dashboard that you can go in and look at by city and by county and find the people who are 50 to 80% area median income, find a count of them and compare the number of people in any given area with the number of homes that are affordable to them. So that gives you a metric for how difficult it is for people in the income category we serve to find an affordable home. In most cases, it's, it's, you know, one home for every 1,500. And in Seattle, Seattle, 600 people were qualified to buy a home. The crisis of supply is significant, it's egregious, it's not because of tech star, you know, it's not because of Amazon and Microsoft exclusively. This is a problem that exists all over the state. It's a problem that exists all over the country. There has been a lack of building starter homes for modest income people all over the country. And this is just a tool for jurisdictions to dimension how big a problem they have locally. There's also a tool there that allows you to look at homeownership grades by race as well as by income. So you can have a, you can do an assessment of the disparate impacts on homeownership and compare BIPOC homeownership to non-BIPOC households in any given two bracket area. So hopefully that's a good planning tool for you. Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate this because one of my concerns about all the push for density improvements is, you know, you, well, you can see the townhouses and shorelines that go on where there was a little house that maybe cost, you know, $800,000 and then they build six side by side townhouses and they're
They'll go for a million.
And they, exactly, exactly. And so where's the, it increases the supply, but where's the affordability? And, and similarly, you know, there's all this state legislation for required density. And I heard like the city council member from Normandy Park, a very high income area, say they're being deluged, they have no plans. say they're being deluged, they have no planning staff, or they have one planning staff, and they're being deluged by developers who are looking at the state legislation and thinking, well, you know, I can build, you know, six $2 million houses here. So the, and actually, state legislators have used the word trickle-down. And trickle-down, your graph shows trickle-down doesn't work. So I really admire the work that you're doing, and my only question is, as it grows, man, isn't managing it, doesn't that get more complex over time, the more properties you have? So I'm just interested in how you, how you deal with that.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a manageable problem. Champlain Housing Trust is the largest community land trust in the United States, and I think they cover three counties. So it's something that, you know, you staff and manage for over time. And, and you, you know, you just make it happen, so.
And that's what you, that's part of what you fundraise for?
Uh, yes.
Cover your staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just curious.
Yeah, so we have a fund that's that one off in Lake Forest Park, right?
Yeah. Anybody online have question?
I had a question about sort of ideal building models and lot sizes. Have you found in the diversity of sort of housing in the 245 housing units that you have, that there's a sweet spot in that? If, if a municipality was going to try to engage in that sort of special, sort of let's test the model, or, you know, wanted to make more surgical changes to their regulation, it's what, what sort of sweet spot for you guys, or is there one?
You know, if my real estate development director was sitting here, he would probably have an answer to that. I tend to be a little bit more opportunistic. You know, the, the full project is, you know, right around an acre, and that's got 18 total homes on it. But we have like an 8,000 square foot lot that's being donated to us by a private individual in the city area where we're putting 30 homes in a condominium style. It's kind of what, it, it just depends on what the community wants. Do you want condominium homes, sack flats, or do you want townhomes? And, and, or cottage homes? And maybe you could give me some feedback in that, or like, is there a specific residential character that you're, you imagine is the ideal thing for Lake Forest Park? Or are you open to the diversity of different building types, different housing types?
I mean, I could take one pass, I'd probably release qualified to answer, but I would just ask, because of the work that was centered around cottage housing, had that been adopted in a, you know, more, maybe complete way? That, that probably have legs, because I think that probably fit that idea of still being a very same-family community versus, you know, high, high-rise sort of development. And I think it also probably appeals to that sort of low-rise density pathway that can help a community continue to achieve its other goals, which I was so happy to hear you talk about. You know, when we have big heatwaves, you hear a lot of the statistics about how lower-income areas are without being infrastructure, that is for their health and benefits of being outside. And, you know, so to have a desire for infill that actually harms the environment is just perpetuating problems that everyone already agrees with. So it's, I had scratchers, so I really think that was a strength of, part of your presentation, was that acknowledgement that you want folks to be in housing that is also environmentally healthy for them.
Well, many splits are an H-back resource that provides heat in the winter and provides air conditioning in the summer, and they're very energy efficient, so there's really no reason not to use that technology when we're building for a home.
I mean, we also have multi-story zoning, dense zoning allowed along our major state routes and also at our town center.
Yeah.
So we do, we, we, it's kind of clustered, right? But it is, it is available. So, and so far, surprisingly, like the zoning down by, by 145th, where the Taco Bell is, is I think so, up to seven stories, isn't it? Yeah, so it allows, you know, a certain amount of density, but yeah, no one has proposed it so far, so.
The, the challenge for us
To buy the ditch on whose site?
Right, right, exactly.
You know, it might be such the case that, that as if the town center property is sold, that maybe part of that is that a portion of it is set aside for affordable homeownership. One of the things that we look for is either a very low cost of land or low cost of land, and is there a way to engineer that as a economic benefit for whatever else gets about?
That's already in the code, and it's in terms of affordability, but yeah, it would be ideal.
We also have a requirement for affordability if you build, I think, over your five years.
So, but it might be the 80%.
And I think that's just of the town center zone, though, I think that's
It's not, it's all the multi-family. No one has used that either.
Well, this has been exceptionally informative, and it's so pleasing because I think we're all sort of painfully aware of the effects of corporations on our housing market who are exploiting and contributing pretty dramatically to the missing hole. So I love this go-around that frequently leaves that, you know, phenomenon out of the equation.
Has it gotten harder for you since there are all these investment groups trying to buy houses to
Yeah.
Hold them?
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, I thought for a long time that Lake Forest Park was immune to that, but I learned on
When we sold Village Gardens, so we had, we had six market rate homes and 10 affordable homes in that, that project. And by market rate, I mean not big mansions, they were like middle, you know, the upper end of the middle. We could have sold every single home within five minutes of two investor buyers. You know, it was just ridiculous. But we had, it was built into the HOA documents that, no, they have to be over occupied even the market rate was.
Very interested to, if you want to make a comment while you're here. As I, I was, we were to do the presentation to other organizations, just really keep that, that you all have. Use like, see more, explain more simply, or.
At some point, I'd like a presentation to the council, but it would have to be a little shorter. So it was 15 minutes.
I think
I can do it, I can do it.
You could save the end, because the question for most of the presentation was the end, and it would leave people the opportunity to ask those questions and follow up. And that would be one piece of feedback, is leave the recommendations for the Q and A, and then be ready with your I think this is respectable, I'm very excited about it, and I, I, you know, I think we're all aware that we've got some large properties in our community, and, and I, I don't think it's probably too out there to predict that, you know, at some point in time when they sell it, it's certainly be subdivided and turned into like on 40th, what was that project called? Those really big houses that were But, but I think that's, we understand that
And I don't know the details, so we did have some bad history with cottage housing too. So just the term cottage housing causes some old timers to
Yeah.
We talked to John about that, I think the planning commission made recommendations that the council sort of sliced up before they adopted it.
Right.
And I think it was the slicing up that created
Yes, I think that's true, so, yeah.
I think anything that actually makes affordable ability, a lot of the stuff that's out in front of the legislature right now is virtue signaling, oh, we need this for affordable housing, but we'll absolutely not do, you know, one ounce of good for the problem that you define. So I'd love to see
Yeah, I think it's a boon for all of theirs, but there's very little teeth for affordability.
Yeah.
So anyway, are we roofed here? I mean, this is actually a large, you know, we, we started out, this has been our community land trust, I think we went to Steve like three years ago, a long time before we started. Is there any possibility we can move forward with HTE, or planning permission to see if there is a place for a test?
Yeah, I mean, I think it really, city does have land that's somewhat vacant or has, you know, preliminary plans for a park, but that stuff, it has to be funded as well. So, you know, the, the next step being a presentation to the council, who makes the ultimate decision what happens to that, is, is, you know, probably more important. Like I said, I don't really see any, any roadblocks, other than sort of the suggestions about streamlining. Those are good, but, you know, it's a small town, which we can do.
Our permit process is fast compared to the other, anyway, any place is fast.
I think there are, there are properties that are out there that
Great, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I was thinking five acres, you look at that, and you put do a park and it was all broke.
Yeah, yeah, it could, and it'd be a lovely place to live, because it'd be spread
I want to live there.
Yeah, we actually, we're working on that, the community of Skyway, where there's this big property called Brooks Village that was taken over by the, by King County, and the community has been asking to have the property give back to the community. It would, it's, I think, four total acres, one acre is developable with housing, the rest are wetlands. And so there's been this, all this resistance of like, no, we're just going to turn this to a new park, which would mean a complete waste of the developable land. So what we're proposing is developing 55 homes on the developable land, surrounded by community-stewarted green space and interpretive trails and urban, urban, or forests, garden forests, forget the term. But, I mean, that's what we're talking about, when we talk about livability, we're talking about scrambling housing with green space, because that's, humans need that too. They need to breathe core bill to, to be healthy and have quality of life, so that's, that's really important.
So I think the other question is, what, what would the planning commission recommend, you know, to put into the comprehensive plan? And to some extent, it might depend on what passes the state legislature this time around, too. So there might be ways to take what the state legislature passes and enhance it with some, you know, community land trust elements.
Affordability, yeah, permanent affordability, yeah.
For home, with home ownership in mind, as opposed to, you know, making corporate builders and managed property managers a lot of money, but that's
So I would also just encourage you, you know, there, that I was, I was talking before the meeting that there's a legislative strategy that, that the, the zoning bill tried, has tried to happen before and got, a lot of folks tried to, it was a Christmas tree that people had to hang stuff on. And this year, the legislative strategy was to try to avoid, you know, the ornamentation of the bill and just try to have it go forward on its own merits and see what it, it does. But that, that was with acknowledging, sort of being intentional about like, we're not going to try to hang these other bits of environmental sustainability and affordability on it to, to, as, as much of an extent as people wanted. But once we get that platform, then that becomes something that
That will happen.
Yeah.
That's a cop-out, personally, I'll just express
That, that's a strategy that was using, and we have successfully gone in and argued for affordability in the statute to a certain extent.
Yeah, it's tough, there's now like six or seven bills that have passed out and kind of a hodgepodge, but there isn't very strong affordability teeth, other than maybe there'll be some state money given to jurisdictions to build their own affordable housing. But I don't think a city as small as ours will ever see a better, you know, because we're too small.
I think you're in an interesting position to your question, Sally, about, you know, pointing out, trying to cherry more support for this. I mean, A, the fact that there is, I, I'd love to see that original set of recommendations by the planning commission, like what did their original cottage housing say?
Yeah.
And, and I'm thinking of this community up in, near Fort Townsend, Cold Timber Village, and I think that they're affordable, but one of the things that was really interesting about their project is it also wasn't voted for in the local zoning. But the people who had this vision for this area, which it is a very lovely community, and, and I guess technically it wasn't affordable at the point, because they were building homes that didn't exist in that area at that size. But one of the things that I thought was novel about their project was that they, they were able to present a plan to the planning commission and the city council to say, we've identified a property, you're supposed to take a personal, and we've identified a layout. So it gave, it gave that group an opportunity to start having a conversation on the specific. It's much, I think, harder to start talking about relations, you know, for the commission to just noodle on and the big recommendations, so the council accepts the policy. It's much harder if we're, if we're just talking about the items you have on your form, because it, it could be applied to anything, but at least in a test case, and I don't know what the next
I think the net zero and the green space also in our community, those elements are really appealing, so.
Like a model project.
Yeah.
At first is asking for our city and state jump in, and I don't, I don't know what it takes to get a model project off the ground, but it seems like that would be easier than trying to just generically change the regulations, so.
Yeah, Bury did a little bit of this, they did, they did a code around demonstration projects for permanent home ownership. They set the income limit way too low, they set 50%, and we, we just can't get there, the subsidy is there.
This is helpful information for us.
Yeah, so, and I think they, they sunsetted their, their demonstration after some debate about it, but, but you could, you could enable for a time, you know, two or three years, an invitation to, for folks to propose affordable housing projects, or just affordable homeownership projects, or, you know, permanently affordable homeownership projects, and, and allow them to submit proposals for higher density and other features that you would like to see, just prove it out on the test case basis. Doing that at the same time that some land is available, which would be good timing. You could enact the ordinance, and if there's no land, then you probably would get a major
Well, everyone's want to share the call to action, that presentation isn't just general knowledge about this, but actually interesting planning. State planning, I mean, your call to action to the broader community is, does anybody want to financially participate in this?
We had a special meeting last night, but we had a theme about capital gains, yes, but all these properties, people, the only properties for 60 years, so that, me, me, on a basis, it's
Yeah, there's a argument to be made that if, if you own a piece of property for decades and then you go to sell it, you're going to pay a certain amount of capital gains. Your accountant though can tell you, well, lower the price, lower your capital gains. And, and maybe hit a sweet spot in there of like, we're not going to make any more than this from the sale. So why not drop the price so that it might be within reach of affordable housing. Or just outright donations. Those are good too.
There's a percentage of our community though that really cares about a lot of the social justice issues that exist in our community. If we saw a vehicle for participating and helping with that, I could see there being the grounds for work for that, which would then give you maybe access to some land which could become a model project.
I have a question. Unfortunately, I came in late, so I apologize. I wish I had answered it. Here's the whole presentation.
Watch the recording later.
I, I will. You do that. And you may have already addressed it. So Lake Forest Park needs you, right? We're clear about that. We need a portable housing in Lake Forest Park. Why, why is Lake Forest Park?
Well, because affordability needs to be everywhere.
Obviously.
Yeah. I think when I first came to Homestead, you know, there were certain areas where people talked about putting affordable housing. And I, looking at, you know, all the places that people have been shut out of buying over the years, I would love myself to see affordability have a, a hold in every community. And that that become the basis for bringing in people who would otherwise have an opportunity to live or buy. Or own in, in all the communities. We all should be opening up and I guess creating communities where everyone can afford to live. We don't want the people who teach our children to have to drive an hour to get to the schools.
That looks like our police officers.
Yeah.
Don't go up here.
Right. And that's the case. I mean, many people have employment bases where people are driving in. And why not make the, our communities out housing that across the income spectrum? So that the people that make the communities great live there too.
Can you provide preference for local teachers and police officers? Too much discrimination. Yeah, community, I used, really? Yep, I was in the, within the, you could invite unless you.
That is our story. Founding Lake Forest Park was meant to be a place for anybody. It was a Highlands built and they found, was it the Highlands or?
Yeah, right. But when you say everybody. Well, not.
I'm sorry.
Possibly.
Which is, which is where it's going.
We want to take half of our roadshow tour of other cities because we, every city needs this. And we could be as strong as an alliance.
Yeah, North Ca- North County Alliance would be a great force for affordability in, in the whole area.
New York, you would.
You said.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
You've been attending.
That's what I wanted. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
But the thing is, it's, this is the thing to do is permanent.
Absolutely.
You know, and again, you talk about disenfranchised folks, right? That's a huge thing.
Yeah. You know, the suburbanization of poverty has shifted most people south, but also people are being forced north. But they're, but they work down here and they're being forced up into single Michelin. It'd be, it'd be just great for them to have a place here.
And I like that message. You know, when you're thinking about the message that you're bringing to I think, you know, something like bring, bring our police officers home.
Yeah.
Right? And starting it with that message, that vision is like, what, what involves people to do.
That's what's going to be interesting for any of these legislative pieces that they pass. Will we have the opportunity locally to say, sure, you can build your complex, but, you know, one unit has to be affordable.
The way it's more written is it has to allow like three or four, but you can get one extra unit squeezed in that's affordable.
But do we locally have any, will we have any future to have our own sort of?
Spin of it.
Right.
Yeah, like, I mean, are they going to force high restrictions or setback restrictions? Like how, what, where do?
Yeah, I know, I know. It's a little fuzzy and frankly, I can't, some of it's written in jargon where even though I'm kind of, you know, familiar, I can't quite figure out what the implications are. Because there's a bunch of waivers and alternatives to allow a locally defined alternative, but exactly what the jargon means on how similar it has to be and how close it has to be, it isn't at all clear. Yeah, so. So, but yes, I think that would be the ideal, would be something that allows us to craft a locally appropriate version.
I mean, that should be a priority and, and I know we'll wrap it with the pump then, but creating an inventory and I feel like this is really just about, they, they have an opportunity right now, all the votes to create not only affordable housing.
That's what's.
Restrictive.
Yeah.
To, I mean, whether it's to a land trust or just a deed restriction, you know.
That's why this is exciting compared to all the bills that I've been reading about because I'm afraid some of that will be just, won't, won't actually enhance affordable housing and homeownership. Because homeownership is the path to generational wealth.
Well, we know it won't.
Yeah, like last week, right? So can we, can we craft that as ours? Yeah.
Thank you so much. And if there's anything that we can do to be.
Thank you.
Thank you for all for supporting us.
Thank you.
The work you do.
Pleasure.
I work for nonprofit too. I know it's, they work love. Yeah, this is really.
Thank you. I think once we know the state legislative outlook, doing the presentation then, so we can circulate both things together as council members, I think would be good timing.
So we see the state legislative outlook.
Once we know what the housing legislation looks like. All of them.
There's like seven, yeah. If we haven't, yeah.
Well, it's something you believe in it. It's upside down.
Yeah.
And finding.
Yeah, I, I met you, right?
You just know that Kathy's. She says, oh.
Even next, do you have any comments or thoughts after this about sure our planners?
Well, I, I think that the next good step would be to get them to look at our menus and how we know and say, what are some policies that we begin, there's some language that we begin conversation to have a, you know, when we get done with this adoption. You have something that really sets up a discussion of what, what should be changed in the code. Should we change that as far as our process and encourage this to happen? And it's going to, it's also going to involve a parcel. How long do you need to sit on a piece of land that you want to develop as a park, but the money's just not there.
Your arguments, Steve, I think that would be helpful to know.
Yeah.
I know we have them, but I haven't paid attention to where. There and there.
They're all in parks.
Yeah.
Land recompense is a bunch of. Or the consultant said, hey, you know, that area behind the shop, you turn that into a park. I'm going to do that.
Right.
You know, is there something, you know, you could, you could take that problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's cool. So two pieces. One is to look at those properties, the other is to see what they would encourage that we put in our top plan or or even our code eventually to facilitate.
One of the things that strikes me is there, you know, they need the land before they can, yeah, build the project. And how successful they can be acquiring land, whether it's land, you know, we already own or having a donation or a, you know, somebody where they're not competing on the open market with a developer. Because that would be my fear. It's just changing the code to, you know, some of the things that they're interested in, then I think it makes it harder for them to get land.
Right.
That's, that's why you would do, to talk about, do a demonstration project type of work.
Right.
Same time you have this property available.
Yes, and then change it for that one, right?
Yeah, and then, and, and it just, it goes away after three years.
Well, and I think the two elements, they talked about the outright donation, but then the other idea that someone who's lived here thirty years, they might not be able to shelter, what is it? You can't shelter more than X hundred thousand dollars capital gains. So at the point where they would own capital gains tax, there's probably a tailored formula that allows you to reduce.
I recently talked about it.
Yeah.
He was interested in selling. But he couldn't, he's reason. He's looking for all kinds of ways to make it work. It just. So he's just going to stay.
Right, right. Right. It, because, because the alternative is, is just for those of you who aren't familiar with the state planning details. If you die, your heirs gather that, you don't have to take capital gains. They gather that, they get the basis raised to the you know, the market value. So, so that's too bad. That's like of this tougher. Wow. Well, that was really interesting. What a great first meeting. I know I wanted to come because of that. I saw the paperwork that you sent out online and I thought, no, I can't listen. I was going to go to the Seattle town hall. No, I think you shall come here. Okay, so believe it or not, we are just now at a minutes for our February seventh meeting. Expected everyone to have a chance to review those. I'm just looking for a thumbs up. All right. Does somebody want to bring the minutes to the table for discussion? I need a motion and a second.
I motion.
Motion.
There we go.
Okay.
A second.
A second.
Okay, thank you. So Melissa first, David seconds. Is there any discussion, any corrections, questions about the minutes from last one? Well, seeing that, all those in favor of approving the minutes as published, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great. Walter, did we get an aye from you?
Well, I was going to ask, is it appropriate for me to approve them or not since I wasn't here?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Were they understandable?
They made sense to me. I just can't validate what was recorded as what anyone said.
Okay, great. So meeting dates, anybody see any conflicts with April eleventh, Friday first blush?
I hope we stick to it. It works for me really well.
Great. And then citizens' comments. Do we have anyone? Okay, great. Well, there's that. Let's see, how about a report from our esteemed council member?
So I will just mention that the council is taking up the reasonable use exception recommendations and we had a very good working session where our planning director and your chair attended and the council, I think, was very interested in what had been recommended, but also might go a little bit beyond it. So that's the, that's the topic for discussion. One, one area was, oh, there were a number of good questions. Some of them were similar to what you all asked way back when, which is what happens if the, you know, if the need for the exception is caused by the property owner dividing the property in certain ways. So that was good because you had addressed that in your recommendations and but one topic we did discuss was can we define a size? So that, you know, it's, it's perhaps a smaller building than what our hearing examiner has, but by his own rule of thumb allowed, especially since someday we might have a different hearing examiner, at least than our hearing examiner for a long time. So like Kirkland, could we specify, you know, an actual general size for what's reasonable? So, and, and maybe a few other questions. So stay tuned because I think the council will be moving that forward to, to final adoption and so forth, but probably adding some else. And then last, I just mentioned that we are, you know, we have a lobbyist, the city has a lobbyist in the state legislature and we have a federal lobbyist. We share with other cities. So we are, we are tied into the Association of Washington Cities to some extent that we have our own lobbyists. And there are about seven housing bills that made it out of either the House or the Senate. And they're all over the map, but the affordability provisions are very limited. The overriding state, I mean, local zoning is strong in all of them. One basically specifies that you really can't have single-family housing anymore. You have to allow, it depends, and, and it's a little hard to figure out how, because there are some tailoring provisions for certain cities, but because we're connected to, to the Seattle growth area, we have probably higher densities than we might think makes sense. So three, four, close to, about away, possibly as many as six units on a parcel. Some of the cities have raised concerns that, you know, lot size or lot sizes are not really covered by that particular bill. So it doesn't, but, but apparently the legislators don't want to take that issue up because it's complicated enough, right? It's kind of, you, you heard some of that. It's complicated enough. So I kind of get that, but it's still I, it rate, also the cost of implementing this when you have small cities like ours with a limited staff, but other cities have no staff. They contract everything out because they're built out and they don't have a lot of permit applications every year. So, you know, none of that, all that is like unfunded and there's a lot of concern by smaller cities about our size and smaller, but it's not getting any traction. The other big issue is transit oriented development. There are bills that require a lot of density within a quarter mile walking distance of major transit stops or frequent transit stops, which include at least by the way, I don't know whether it's the way the definition for frequent bus stop would include balance or not clear to me. This is where it gets a little fuzzy. But, but the density seems to be almost like up to nine-story buildings if you do, if you did the math. And then within a half a mile, it used to be three quarters of a mile, there would be another density bump. No parking can be required. So we'll see what, what, what comes out of it. There's another bill that basically says for certain kinds of multifamily housing, you, you can streamline the permitting process by having no CBO review, no public meetings and no non-objective design review, like, which I do understand that our planning director has always asked us to be as specific as possible, but we have, we have a lot of design guidelines. And that's my sense that they don't want to have to go through design guideline review. So there's a bunch of stuff and it's all passing, you know, with wide majorities. So some of it, oh, and there, there are also some climate action things for comprehensive planning. So some of it, oh, and there, there are also some climate action things for comprehensive planning. Uh, so someday we're going to get some clarity on what's going to stick to the law, but right now it's like six or seven competing bills.
Six questions, which, okay, well.
Yeah, the governor's kind of supporting all of these. I mean, there's just this almost panicked view that for affordability, we have to increase supply and literally a trickle down. So, uh, I, if you look at Shoreline and all the townhouse developments going up, I don't see the trickle down.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't see it in Seattle either, my daughter lives near Green Lake, there was like a little teeny house on the corner, right by her apartment building, which is sold by someone in Lake Forest Park. And, uh, and, uh, so what they did is they, they put on this little tiny lot, like four tall skinny townhouses. And they're like 1.1 million each, so, you know, so even if they paid a million.
Anyway, Melissa?
Um, yeah, I, I, I'm just assuming that, um, in terms of like what our interests are, we are pushing back on some of that. Because, you know, that seems like a competing view with what Inslee and the entire administration wants to push with climate change and making sure that we have green space and. Trees and why, you know, we already have trees here, so, um, you know.
I agree, the inconsistency with climate change and, um, tree canopy and all that stuff from climate, climate calls. Doesn't seem to be incorporated into it, you know, um, so it's hard to, uh. It's hard to understand, I think there's, again, there's a sense of like panic over housing almost, you know. Urgency, I guess, would be the better way to say it, but hopefully whatever sorts out will have, be a little more reasonable and. We'll be able to put our own spin on it for implementation, but our legislate, you know, we're now in the first legislative district. We used to be in the 46th, so we have all new legislators. And honestly, some of them are prime sponsors of these bills. Uh, and I've written letters and haven't gotten the kind of feedback I used to get from our representatives in the 46th. So they're, you know, they, they previously were Woodinville, Babel, Kenmore, uh, and now we're added into the mix, right? And so they don't know us very well, and I don't think they've necessarily taken up representing us very much in the conversations. So don't put that in the. I don't want to annoy them. But I'm just, I'm a little frustrated, you know, actually, Representative Paulette, our previous representative, has actually, um. More responsive and voted against, some of these things are offered amendments, uh, so kind of interesting.
I, I, what I think is interesting is it's not a surprise that we're here, when you look at what some other western states have done.
Yeah.
But what's a surprise is that we haven't taken the phenomenal opportunity to be like nationally recognized for making the affordability work. Right, because we've seen an absence of that in other states.
Uh-huh.
And that more housing, more density hasn't helped the fundamental problem of getting people who are getting squeezed out. You know, there's this sort of disappearing of the middle and we have a real opportunity with this sort of like legislation, with affordability provisions. To actually do what those other states thought would happen, but didn't happen on their own.
Well, that and the environmental sustainability, to me, that's, that's what I thought our state was known for.
Yeah.
So that is my great disappointment, but I'm hoping that we can put some of that spin on whatever passes out, so. Anyway, sorry about bad news.
Hello.
Uh, and, and one last thing tomorrow is, uh, the Sound Transit Open House. Uh, so if you've been following the news, it's a good time to go and make sure you, uh, express your views. It doesn't have to be in support of everyone else's list of things to change, but it is, um. It is kind of a, uh, draw lines on paper, uh, and, and we are the most impacted community in terms of. Uh, you know, going through big residential areas that are now heavily treated. So, uh, if you can come, it's good to show up and tell Sound Transit.
Particularly because there's a, uh. There is at least by a decent number of folks, this idea that, uh, there's only a few people in Lake Forest Park that care about what Sound Transit's doing. And if you can't get behind the impacts, the environmental impacts, so that there are design solutions that could have less environmental impacts. Uh, you could also look at the budget, uh, for what the design solution they're implementing will cost us as taxpayers. So if you can't get behind the environment, get behind the economics of it and just, you know.
I got shocked that the economics hasn't been more compelling.
I know.
The board is dealing with budget shortfalls.
Yeah.
And here's a chance to save some money.
But if you can go out, it would be nice for our town to show that, you know, there aren't just a handful of people that care about what happens in our community. You know, even if it's not our backyard, but just to go out and support of saying, we're interested in what you're doing and we're paying attention.
Yeah.
Do, do we have a number on how much it's going to cost?
Yes.
How much is it?
So, uh, Matt, you might know the latest, but at, at one point I was looking, we were looking at, uh, it was over, the, the Lake Forest Park portion was over 500 million.
Which was a pretty significant percentage.
Of the total of the project.
Yeah.
Cause most of the property acquisitions they have to do are here and, uh, uh, then the.
More than half of the property acquisitions across the project are allocated.
Yes, yes, and, uh, and so it's, it's, and the, people have had to pull that information out. It isn't really very transparent, so it's like five to six hundred million dollars, yeah, and so is, is what I understand. But I don't want, don't worry on that without looking, there are materials on the, on the various websites, uh.
I think the city's put some up and then there's a group within Lake Forest Park core that's working, yeah, you saw.
Yeah, um, so yes, they, um, uh, and for, as you know, for, by their own estimates. They say it will at peak commuter hours going northbound, which they call eastbound. Uh, it, because it curves, right, it will save two minutes. So, uh, at first I thought that would be the most compelling argument, like, not really worth it, but apparently.
So the open house, uh, Melissa and Meredith, you haven't seen this, is from three to seven at Brookside Elementary.
Yes, yeah.
Um, you know, I'm cognizant of the time and I think we'll table the reports, uh, until our next meeting. Could, could you remind me, David, which, where you retreat board? Melissa, which committee were you, I didn't have good notes on this?
Um, I wasn't here last time, so I didn't get a committee, but I've been trying to go online and review the minutes.
Okay, Meredith?
Yeah, I'm, um, Parks Board and then also Police Department.
Do you remember what Ashton was?
She was, uh, Parks as well, I believe, I.
Okay, uh, so is it between, um?
And I want to say that Lois is the environmental, uh, group.
What, uh, is there one of you that don't have an assignment that would want to be, uh, doing the tree board with David?
I'll do it.
Although I have to say, there's not much to say about that.
That's, that's fine, and, and we'll take it, Melissa, we'll work on you and Walter and Sam next time. Oh, with that, I, I know we've all, are you guys okay?
I have, I have one last thing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, so what happened to the ABU that was like, um, additional dwelling on a property? Is that still something that Lake Forest Park does?
We adopted it.
You adopted it.
The planning commission developed recommendations to make it more, uh, flexible and feasible. And we adopted those recommendations with a few minor changes. And I think the piece that, uh, council members are still kind of interested in, that I think Seattle might have done. Is can we come up with some standard designs that would streamline the permit process of tree designer design? So I think, I think, uh, Steve and Nick just happen to have the, uh, time right now to put that together. But the council, I think, would be very, would welcome that, uh, greatly and, uh, that might, that might help. We haven't seen like a complete bonanza of ABU requests.
What Nick was just saying about some of the property owners that have been here for a long time, the capital gains. You know, it might be worth it for them to do an ABU request.
Interesting.
Too, because as a parent, you know, that would be a solution for my kids.
Right.
Being able to live here, right?
Absolutely.
And so we have so much value in our house, but we can't do anything with it because we don't want to get hit with the taxes.
Yeah.
So I think that we can somehow get that up to the public as a way for them to.
And maybe just reminding them that we want to say to you or.
And making it easy, yeah, I think. Are you guys all right to stay on for just a minute while we hear an update on our consultant for the comp plan? That's fine, I just did it, I just was keeping him and he probably kept it.
Very important still, but I think we can still stay on schedule, have it published by the end of March at first.
Okay, so the RFP isn't issued yet, but it will be by the end of March, okay. All right, fantastic, and, um, I think with that, we should wrap up, given that, the hour. And, um, thank you for your time, if, uh, we can, we'll move into old business, or we, our little business. Uh, new business, any, any, any reports or announcements? Did anybody online, this is the process, sorry, I'm listening to you guys through, I just know that we've got at least one second person here. No reason to delay. All right, and then, um, in terms of an agenda for our next meeting, we'll certainly do the report outs for our, uh, different video segments. What else will we be ready to discuss next month or should we?
Um, I have to give it some thought.
Okay. Perfect, okay. Excellent, well, with that, I would love to, Eric, and motion to adjourn. I motion to adjourn now.
My second.
Great, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you guys have a great evening, thanks for being here. Feel better, Meredith?
Hi, thank you.